Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Keel, please call roll.
Carrie Hodge, Ward one. Jay Stepp, Ward two. Lindsay McDaniel, Ward three.
Here.
Louis Tonspire. Louis Tonspire, Ward three. Lindsay McDaniel, Ward four.
Louis Tonspire is here.
Diane Tate, Ward five. Lori Pruitt, Ward six.
We've never asked a time here, but I am. We've got the council meeting minutes from our May third meeting. Council, you've had these since probably a couple of days. So Chair will entertain any adjustments, amendments, corrections, or motions.
Mayor, make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. We have a first item is a special use application. Mr. Minino, if you'll start us off with that, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is special use twelve dash oh two. As I'd said at the previous meeting when we had the special use twelve oh one, these used to be heard by the Board of Zoning Appeals. Now they are heard by the Planning Commission and forwarded on to council in the same manner that a zoning case is heard. This is an application for the Forever Blessed Church of God to allow a church in a LI industrial, light industrial district. Our ordinance requires special use now for churches in any zoning district so they can be evaluated based on the particular standards. This particular church has been in existence for approximately two years. We weren't aware of it. A church doesn't require an actual business license and the fire department came across it during an inspection process. And because of that, we put it in the process to bring it up to the standards with the special use permit. Based on that, the individual departments did review the application to allow this at the location forty-nine North Avenue. And with that, the fire department did have certain concerns about a shelter or transitional home that's in the basement of this particular facility. With that, they didn't meet certain codes. The fire department came up with an interim plan so they can continue to operate there, but does request that they do have a permanent solution to the issues that they have brought up. With that, the Planning Commission did hear this and the Planning Commission did recommend approval of this application, subject to the applicants complying with the fire department's request.
Any questions for Randy at this point? Thank you, sir. And right now, I'll open up a public hearing relative to SU twelve dash zero two. Anybody who wishes to step forth, speak for or against may do so at this time. And seeing none, I will close the public hearing for this first reading of SU twelve dash zero two. And since it is a first reading, there is no action that is required by council tonight. We'll take this up for consideration at our next scheduled meeting. Next item is appointments to the alcohol control board. Randy?
Thanks again, Mayor and Council. As you're aware, the terms of two of our members are expiring, Jack Reeves and Robbie Stewart. Jack Reeves has been on there since the beginning and since the beginning of us having an alcohol control board. And with that, he's had several terms. He's been reappointed and he's requested to allow him to go ahead and retire and does not desire to be reappointed. And Robbie Stewart, who is our newest member, this is his, he's ended his first term, has graciously stated that he would serve again if reappointed. Additionally, the chairman is appointed by city council, mayor and council, and Jack Reeves is our current chairman. So our chairman will be retiring at this time. Right now, Rick Naps is serving as the vice chairman of this board. There's no chairman appointed at this time. Rick would assume the duties until y'all appoint a new chairman. So at this time, we'd like to request that y'all either reappoint Robbie Stewart or another gentleman in his place, or lady, excuse me, and replace also Mr. Reeves and appoint a chairman.
I have a suggestion. I've checked with Rick Naps and he is willing to serve, so I would like to suggest that he be the chairman.
Okay. Would you like to put that in form of a motion?
I'd like to move that.
Would you like to further make a motion that Robbie Stewart be reappointed?
I would like to do that, too.
What a motion by suggestion.
Second.
We've got a motion in a second, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries. And just note that we do have another opening on that board that will need to get appointed probably at the next meeting.
I believe I originally appointed Mr. Reeves when we first formed the alcohol control board, but are these positions?
There's only five. Y'all done it as a, as a group. Because there isn't one for each individual, but you may have brought him up.
I did.
And the rest of council agreed.
So they're not ward specific?
They are not.
So we just need an at-large person to fill that position? Okay, great.
Thank you.
And certainly, I want to thank Mr. Reeves for his time.
Absolutely.
Hopefully, we'll recognize him in a later meeting for his service. We will get it. Sam, you've got the next couple, please.
Yeah, this item is the refunding of the bonds for the utilities for Highland Seventy-Five and Toyo. It received approval from the county commissioner. This morning came through the Cartersville Building Authority and obviously now with you being the last body to approve it. The reason that we're doing this is to refinance the bonds at a lower interest cost and have interest savings for the city and the county. I wonder, Gabe, could I ask you to come up and kind of lead?
Just keep it brief.
Yeah, lead council through the particulars of it.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As Sam mentioned.
Gabe Hagan, Morgan Keegan.
This is a three-part approval. The bonds that we're discussing here, the Series Two Thousand Four Cartersville Building Authority bonds, which originally financed water sewer projects that were acquired by the county and gas utility projects that were acquired by the city. And it's a fifty-fifty agreement where the city pays fifty percent of the bond payments and the county pays fifty percent of the bond payments. Of course, the county approved their authorizing resolution yesterday and the city, Cartersville Building Authority, adopted a bond resolution today. And the terms of the new deal are we're basically lowering the interest rate from four point zero seven percent to one point nine five percent. So the total savings to be split between the city and the county are about seven hundred thirty thousand dollars here, net of all costs of doing the bond issue. And another important fact about the refunding is this is going to allow us to pay the payments with the two thousand fourteen sploesed. So we're going to have a larger payment in two thousand nineteen, but we're going to have sploesed money accumulating. And the plan here is for the city and the county both to liquidate this bond completely with the two thousand fourteen sploesed. So I think that pretty well covers it, but if you have questions, feel free to ask me.
Obviously, we recommend your approval of this bond refunding.
I have two agreements that the motion would need to address. One is an authorizing resolution that is for the city on its side. The county's done one just like it that describes basically what Sam and Gabe just told you as far as the transaction and approves going forward with the transaction. The other one is a bond placement agreement that is a joint agreement between the city, the county, and Morgan Keegan that Gabe is with. It's already been signed by somebody named Gabriel Hagan. Is that you, Gabe?
That's me.
Gabriel L. Hagan's already signed it on behalf of Morgan Keegan and somebody named Clarence Brown has signed it on behalf of Bartow County. There's a place for the Cartersville Building Authority to sign, which they approved this morning.
Aye.
And a place for the city of Cartersville mayor to sign. So, you know, I would recommend the adoption of the authorizing resolution and the bond placement agreement.
Thank you.
Any discussion or questions on this item? If there are none, the Chair will entertain a motion.
Mayor, make a motion to approve the resolution for the city and the bond placement agreement.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Motion's sufficient.
Mayor, just comment saving seven hundred and fifty thousand, thirty thousand dollars, excuse me. Sounds pretty good. Unless it's fluid, the county will.
My dad used to say better than a sharp stick in the act.
She got that right.
Next item is the Optimist Club July Fourth festivities.
Right, this is the agreement between the city and the Optimist Club for the Fourth of July celebration in Dillinger Park. We started this several years ago and I think it's worked pretty well. Under the agreement, the city will fund and coordinate the twelve police officers, two firefighters, the ATV response unit, a fire truck to be placed at Dillinger Park from eight-thirty until the event's over, also fund the fireworks to the tune of two thousand dollars, coordinate with EMS and that the city and Optimists will also split the two-dollar parking fee from the event. That's the essence of the agreement. It's virtually unchanged from last year and recommended for your approval.
Any discussion on this item? If there's none, Chair will entertain a motion.
A motion to approve this agreement relative to the Fourth of July.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Come on next, you've got the next one. Tom Sanders, you're on deck.
Counsel, this is an agreement with Arista LLC. They're the general contractor for the proposed Walgreens at the corner of Church Street and Tennessee Street. And it's an agreement that in lieu of the waterline extension they were going to construct, they're going to provide twenty-five thousand dollars for the city to go ahead and do a waterline extension up the side of Tennessee Street to bring adequate water for their fire protection system. Part of the agreement is that we would have the line in place and ready to serve them by October first of this year. We're asking for approval tonight, subject to review and recommendation by the city attorney and also their submission of the e-Verify and Save documentation. It is a time-sensitive item since it's holding up the closing on their property, but we do recommend approval of this agreement.
Any questions on this item?
Two quick questions. First of all, which corner at Church and Tennessee are we talking about?
It is the corner where there's a service station. It's basically across from CVS. The opposite side of Church Street from CVS.
And if by chance that building winds up not being built, is there any impact, any problem, any issue with what we're planning for the city?
This more fits in with our overall master plan for redoing the waterline up Tennessee Street. This upcoming bond issue is for replacing the waterline along Tennessee Street. We're planning to do some significant work in Tennessee Street. I think that's the stuff that's prompted us to not overlay Tennessee Street and this fits in with that.
So we'll go ahead and do this and even if nothing happens on that property, we're still okay?
It was something that needed to be done anyway, but this will get it completed earlier.
I got to turn it around. Is this where that tire station is right across from Church?
Yes, it would be.
Didn't you say three buildings to take?
They're combining three properties there to form one.
You want a motion, ma'am?
Anytime.
Make a motion to approve the water extension line on Tennessee Street, subject to a review by the city attorney and subject to e-Verify and Save documentation.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Thank you, Ed. Mr. Sanders.
Mayor and council, this first item is for the cemetery mowing and it's a contract. The existing contract, we've renewed for five times in a row and that's the maximum that's allowed. So we rebid and the bids were Tidwell Lawn Care at thirty-four hundred per mowing and Full Circle at thirty-two hundred per mowing. Full Circle is the current vendor and we recommend award to them and that we enter into this contract with them. The maximum, the yearly maximum for this would be eighty-three thousand two hundred and it is a budgeted item.
Mayor, I meant to ask Tommy this in the work session. Where is Full Circle Management? Is that local?
That's a local company here in Cardinal Field. Yes, they do concrete work. They're doing all the curb and gutter and driveways and all the flat work out at the public safety center. They, you might have seen white, the white vehicles with their logo on it. They're, I've seen them a lot around town.
Tommy, when you all do this bid, I mean, you may not have personally done it, but some of those tombstones are very fragile up there. I mean, the discussion happens with them, talking about the tombstones and trimming and being careful, doesn't it?
Oh, yes. That's all in, in the contract. You know, there's a lot of things addressed in the contract about the specifics, you know, they have to do edging and weed eating and the cemetery's forty-four acres and, you know, that's, that's one of the reasons why we like to use a vendor is because they can move a lot of people in and they get it done in about a day and a half, the whole forty-four acres. And it's a lot of tedious handwork, a lot of push mower work, you know, it's not like they just come in there with a bush hog and.
Well, you couldn't.
Right, you can't. And so, and the key thing is, is getting in and out because if you, if you don't hit it with a lot of force all at once, it's going to end up by the time you get from one end to the other, you got to start back and with the, you know, the way the cemetery is, all the traffic through there and you don't, you don't want to have a constant mowing project going on. So, you know, we've got to pay a little bit of a premium for that, for getting them in there with such force, but that's, you know, we feel it's worth the money.
These new contractors, Tidwell and Full Circle.
Full Circle was the low bidder. They, Tidwell, they bid thirty-four hundred per mowing and Full Circle bid thirty-two hundred, so.
Full Circle is a new one.
Our recommendation is that you award it to Full Circle.
If we use Tidwell.
Yeah, I believe so. Tidwell was a former one, right?
Tidwell had it, they had the cycle five years ago. So, and we, when we rebid it five years ago, as you mentioned, we had another company come in and really lowballed and they lasted like one mowing. They mowed it one time and said, we're quitting. We don't want, this is too much work. And so that's when we went to the second bidder at the time, which was Full Circle.
Okay.
So Tidwell and Full Circle both knew what they were bidding on.
So Full Circle has been doing it?
That's correct, for the last five years.
Got it.
I hope this is a pertinent question because I'm sure it adds to the cost of the mowing. Is the use of statuary limited to the present areas of the cemetery or?
Are you the cemetery guru?
Oh, well, no, definitely not, but the, the new areas, there are certain areas. The older areas, you can have raised monuments. The new sections, it's, it's all got to be flat. So, and those are easy to see when you go out there.
Of course, easier to maintain, too.
Right.
Yeah, I sort of suspected that's what it was.
Basically, if somebody buys a lot now, it's, it's got to be a flat monument, a flush monument. The, it's the older lots that have been purchased years ago that they can still have the vertical monuments.
Tommy, I just heard that you were not the guru, but I wonder if a tombstone is knocked over accidentally, mowing, whatever, and they see it, is there a process? Do they report that to the office or do we wait till a family member tells us?
You talking about if the contractor does it? You know, the contractor, you know, we've got liquid head damages set up and we've got ways of enforcing that on the contractor for him to either repair or us to repair it and deduct it from his payment. So we've got a crew that works out of that location that's in there every day that would, you know, that monitors the whole cemetery. So they would know if, if something like that happened and who was, most likely who was responsible for it.
If they're not doing their job, we'll hear about it.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Sure.
All right, should I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve Full Circle Management bid.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, the next item is a bid award. We need ten two cubic yard dumpsters and ten six cubic yard dumpsters. And we put those out for bid. Baker's Waste Equipment Company bid eleven thousand three seventy-six. That includes the freight. And Waste Quip Hope bid eleven thousand seven twenty-four, including freight. And we recommend awarding this to the low bidder, which is Baker's Waste Equipment, at eleven three seventy-six. And this is a budgeted item.
Any discussion needed on this item? If there's none, the Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to accept the bid of the low bidder.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Next one, Tom.
The next item is also a bid award. This is a roadway project. It's for thermoplastic striping and raised pavement markers on several city streets. And we've done this the last four or five years. We've applied for a grant from GDOT. We received a grant this year for sixty-three thousand three hundred and sixty-one dollars. We put this project out for bids and Peak Traffic Markings bid seventy-five thousand six sixty-seven eighty, Parker Traffic Markings bid seventy-five two thirty-four ten, and TMI Services bid sixty-nine thousand six seventy-four forty. And we recommend award to TMI Services. This is, that, that grant money is federal money, just FYI, so we did, in the contract, we have to comply with Davis Bacon and there's a ten percent DBE requirement and all the usual federal things when you use federal money.
Any other discussion on this item?
Tommy, when we do, excuse me, when we do a project like this with GDOT, federal money, federal money or not, but this particular kind of grant, is it, is it a reimbursement or do we get the grant and then we, we show what we did for the money?
It's, it's a reimbursement. So we do the work and we pay for it and then I notify the, the contact at GDOT. He comes out and inspects it and if it was done to their satisfaction, then they cut us a check and reimburse us.
After the project's completed, after they made the check up.
That's correct. And there is a difference. There's about a six thousand dollar difference between the grant amount and the actual low bidder and we're going to pay for that using sploesed money. So we're getting a seventy thousand dollar job for about six thousand.
Yeah, I know this is, you mentioned this is the third or fourth year that you've done it. I just want to compliment you on going out and getting this money. It does make a difference. Taxpayers of the community aren't paying for it directly and you can sure see it particularly with the, the raised markings on the road. It does make a big difference.
Oh, yeah, at night, when it's raining and dark, those, those can sometimes be the difference.
Thank you for doing that.
Tell them where you're at or not.
I love those things, yeah, they're great. Especially the older I get. Have we voted yet? Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, Mr. Ricks.
Mr. Mayor, we need to buy two hundred residential meters to replenish our stock and we're recommending accepting the bid from Equipment Controls, who was low bid at twelve thousand three hundred dollars.
Any discussion required on this item? If there's none, Chair will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the low bid for new gas meters.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries.
Thanks.
Chief, you got the next one.
Mayor and council, good evening. I bring before you tonight a request of purchase for twelve sets of personal protective equipment, what we call turnout gear for structural firefighting and other emergency incidents. This twelve sets of gear is for the new firefighters who will be employed with the expansion of our services here later this summer. Three bids were solicited, a high bid of twenty-two thousand four hundred and sixty-four dollars and forty-eight cents. Low bid was sixteen thousand thirty-eight dollars, which is three thousand below our budget. It's Firemaster gear. We are recommending the purchase of the low bid, which is the Firemaster gear. E-Verify documents are all on file and this is a budgeted item.
Any discussion?
Motion to approve the low bid.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries.
Thank you.
Come on, Bob. With council's permission, I'll ask Bob to address his two items and then we'll.
Get the trucks.
Good evening. We have for your consideration a bid award. We took bids for a replacement sewer rotting truck. Our current unit's twenty-five years old, showing some signs of age, increased maintenance, the usual things that come with vehicles of that vintage. We solicited bids from several suppliers. P&amp;H Supply came in at low bid for, at ninety-eight nine ninety-three. We would recommend award of that to them. This is a budgeted item.
Any discussion? If there's none, Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the bid from B&amp;H Supply. Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Let it hurt any motion, move things around on the agenda, do what? Why don't you go ahead and handle that other?
Go ahead and tackle that other truck. This is a similar situation. We have a nineteen eighty-six dump truck that is not fit for the road. We solicited bids for a replacement truck. Wade Ford came in as low bid at fifty-five four eighty-eight. This is a budgeted item and as we mentioned before, and I think in your prep packet, we had actually budgeted quite a bit more money for the rotter truck and we will be able to pay for the full cost of this dump truck with the savings that we're realizing there. So we would recommend approval for the, of the Wade Ford bid and this would also be a budgeted item.
Any questions for Bob on this item? If there are none, Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the bid from Wade Ford.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, council, this is a restock item for water meters to restock our inventory. Delta Meter Supplies is sole source supply for the Neptune meters we use. This purchase is for approximately a hundred and fifty meters of various sizes. They submitted a price of sixteen thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars. We recommend approval of this purchase. It'll be paid for from the budget and all e-Verify and Save documentation has been submitted.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Make a motion to approve the purchase from Delta Supply.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries.
The next item's for replacement of a forty horsepower gearbox for a pump inside our water pollution control plant. We received bids from two different suppliers. Rome Electric submitted a bid of twenty-one thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars. Applied Industrial Tech submitted a price of twenty-five thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars sixty-three cents. We do feel this is a very good price because it's only two thousand more than the cost to rebuild it, so we feel that's a bargain. We do have the e-Verify and Save documentation in hand. This will be paid for from the budget item for maintenance to equipment. We recommend approval for the purchase from Rome Electric.
Motion for the approval of the purchase from gearbox from Rome Electric.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 The motion carries.
And the next item is, we are in the process of a revenue bond issue. A necessary item for this was an engineering report for the loan institution. A necessary item for this was an engineering report for the loan institution. We had Jacobs Engineering prepare this work, report. They did the work in a timely manner for a price of $9,000. This will be paid for from the bond proceeds. We do have the eVerify and Save documentation in hand.
Questions or comments on this item? More motions?
Motion to approve.
Second?
All in favor of Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Ed. Ryan Hart, you've got the financial report.
Honorable mayor and council, we're going to be looking at the March 2012 financial information and comparing it to the March 2011. In the general fund, revenues have increased since March 2011 by $35,000. Expenses have also increased by $236,000. The increase in the expenses is due to the increased operation expenses and increased capital expenses. Three areas of revenue that I look at on a monthly basis are the local option sales tax. Compared to March of 2011, we have a decrease of $242,000. Police fines and forfeitures, we have an increase of $75,000. And building permits and inspections, we have an increase of $20,000. The water and sewer fund, we have increased revenues over last year of $135,000, and we also have expenses that have decreased by $40,000, and this is due to decreased debt service payments. In the gas fund, our revenues have decreased from last year by $2.3 million, while expenses have decreased $1.3 million. The decrease for the expenses is the decrease due to the cost of purchased gas. In the electric fund, revenues have increased from last year by $3 million. Expenses have increased by $2.6 million. This increase is due to increased operating expenses and increased cost of purchasing electricity. In the stormwater fund, we have increased revenues from last year of $36,000. The expenses have decreased by $272,000. This is due mainly to the decrease in capital expenses. Remember, last year, we were doing some major projects in the stormwaters fund. Solid waste fund, revenues have decreased from last year by $36,000, and expenses have increased by $156,000. This should be made up within the next month or so as we purchase some recycling trucks and recycling carts. We're looking to be reimbursed from the GMA lease pool for that in the next month or so. And finally, in the fiber optics fund, revenues have decreased from last year by $173,000, and the expenses have decreased by $108,000. This is due to decreased operating expenses, decreased MEAG debt service payments, and decreased capital expenses. And that is my report for the evening.
Any questions for Tom on the financial report?
Mayor, just a comment. On our building permits and inspection fees, Randy, as compared to a lot of other years, those numbers are still low. However, there is an increase in the report Mr. Brog sent out to us. They want too many building permits, but maybe a number of remodeling permits are coming in?
Yeah, we're seeing more remodeling commercial, I think, in the information I sent that Tom put together.
Well, that's a good sign.
Didn't send a good portion of that to the public safety building as well?
Yes.
There were two city projects out there also.
Yeah, we still only have two residential permits for the year.
I saw that, but a lot more remodeling. So maybe that's a good sign. I certainly hope so. We all do.
Anything else you'd like to add, or anything else you'd like to say before this meeting's over?
Just trying to bribe you.
Thank you, Tom. Anybody have anything that needs to come for council this evening? Seeing that? Any announcements? Anything is anything.
Grandbaby.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.